A reconvene, Chester, this meeting.
That's correct.
We postpone the meeting, or adjourn the meeting. Not adjourn the meeting.
Continue.
Continue the meeting.
Recede.
Recede, thank you. The other night, so we will not do all the things we normally do at the front. Any adjustments to the agenda? You have the agenda that's fairly shortened.
I don't have it.
The agenda's in front of you. You've got it by email. Anybody got a copy of the agenda for one of our commissioners? Thank you. Any adjustments? Anything you've got to make over there?
My name is Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Item number seven, change of report, paint on Tennessee River, part of the chicken front line. I've got some more information I need to get on the bill for that till the end of this week, so I want to postpone that meeting next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Do you think else?
We also planned a special basis for the renovation to the dental plan that y'all approved their last time officially approved the plans specs.
As well as the contract.
As well as the contract to do that.
Do we sign the contract? The health department signed it.
The county will be signing it.
So if we want to add that to it, what is it?
Thank you. Thank you. Item number seven, are you going to call it?
Approve the contract.
Approval of the...
Bill and run rate.
What you did is you awarded the bid. Now you have the contract set, and you simply need to approve the entry in the contract by Commissioner.
You're into the details, aren't you, Chester? You're a good guy. We voted on him.
No, you voted to award the bid.
All right. Agreed. Okay, gentlemen, with removing the former item number seven and adding back, excuse me, the contract for the dental planning, with the reemotions to approve that agenda. Motion second, by Commissioner Beal. Any discussion? All the way to say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes. And gentlemen, we, as you know, by statute, by law, we have a public comment period every regular meeting, which is our second Tuesday of the month. And I think we may have some public here that have asked to speak, so if it'd be okay with you, I'd like to allow that tonight. I don't think we ever call them to keep anybody from speaking that won't speak. So we did have a signup sheet, I realize that, but if you're here and would like to speak to any issue at all, it doesn't have to be what's on our agenda tonight, you're free to do that. So we recognize anybody who wants to speak. Yes, sir. Come right in. You come right in. State your name, and maybe state your name and what city you want to speak about.
Okay. My name is Dan Hunter. I'm the president of Franklin Woodley Association, and I'm here to talk about the Parker Meadows Woodley, or Parker Meadows complex. Our board has had the boys' side and the girls' side. We've had our meetings, and they've basically thrown me to the wolves and said, "Come up here and tell us guys we're for." We've had a lot of parents tell us it's a big good thing for the community as a whole, be a good thing for the economy, restaurants, hotels, whatever, travel ball, anything like that. But I just want to go on the record and say that Franklin Woodley is for the complex of Parker Meadows.
And you're speaking for Franklin Woodley, boys and girls?
Yes, I'm over both of them.
Baseball and softball, yes, sir.
Thank you for what you did.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Been there, definitely.
Yeah. And let me add, all the parents always agree on everything, right?
That's what I always do. It varies.
Yeah, you need to run for county commission.
Well, I may have more than that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else that wants to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Come on. Please state your name and what city if you would like to speak.
My name is Melinda Carpenter, and I want to talk about the fields as well. I am the vice president of Little League softball. And like Dan said, you know, the girls are excited. They've heard as well, you know, about the possibility of having a big sports complex, and parents are really excited. We don't have a whole lot of fields for the kids to play on, and, you know, that being said, having a big ice complex would be wonderful for the kids and the parents, too, and bring a lot of money, and hopefully be counted back to the local board.
Thank you, Ms. Price. No, Ms. Price.
She's Carpenter.
Carpenter, sorry. She used to be Price. Mr. Slaver, would you like to speak? You're here, and you know issues on your heart tonight?
No.
Anyone else that'd like to speak to the board? All right, we'll move on. Gentlemen, item number three is basic facts and assurances regarding proposed Parker Meadows recreational park phase one, and then after that consideration of purchase. Let me just sort of frame what we're doing tonight. Chester's always really good. If I say something wrong, he looks and correct me, and I'm glad he does that. And I probably said something a little wrong the other night, and just for the meeting, we're actually not going to vote tonight to buy the property or not. We've already done that. We voted to enter into a, and Paul's in real estate business, he can explain this better than I can, or maybe Chester's help. We voted in November to enter into a contract giving ourselves the due diligence time, which we asked for another 30 days, and then we asked for another 30 days. That additional 30 days ends today. So what we would have to do is vote not to buy the property. Did I explain that correctly?
Basically, what you said.
He asked me to correct that in case we were confused about what we were doing or not doing tonight.
I think you stated correctly. Basically, you have contract to buy the property. That contract gave you the absolute right to inspect the property, conduct due diligence, and if in and during that process, the board made the decision that it did not want to go forward with the contract, it had the absolute right to end the contract. That period within which to end the contract by absolute right without consequence to the county ends today. So what we did is we recessed to this evening to give the county the greatest period possible to be able to exercise that option should it choose to do so. So the issue really is whether or not the county desires to take action to end that contract. Otherwise, you'll be going forward.
And it took me a second to round my head around that, because I'm not in the real estate business, but if my wife and I were, if we'd made an offer to buy this property, tell me if you're sure if I'm wrong, if we had entered into a contract of purchase, and then Beth and I just decided, okay, we've done our due diligence, this would suit our needs for these reasons, then I would just say, "We don't want it." For us to say we don't want it, we've got to vote, because I can't say that we've got to vote.
That's correct.
We don't want it.
One of you can't make that decision.
Correct.
It takes the board.
That's correct. Is that clear with everybody? So in other words, if we do nothing, we bought the property. Does that make sense?
You will be buying it.
We will be buying the property. So I just want to make that clear. I probably didn't say that correctly that day. I want to get real beautiful.
And a third option is the potential, if you have a desire to conduct further studies, to request the seller to extend an inspection. So you've got three potential options.
So we could take no formal action, or we could vote to ask for more due diligence.
That's correct.
We could do any one of those three things, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, I was, yes, I've, if the board votes not, if the board is not voting on the property, you know.
I haven't.
The contract says that the due diligence is up on the fourth name, that we will close by the 31st, that's correct.
Actually, 29. Close by the 29th.
So it says it's up 29. So that means we have to close by the 29th. If we don't close by the 29th, probably not as long as you say.
Well, the, I'm not sure if that provision's time is of the essence or not. If you may, give me just one moment.
So does everybody understand that? I don't, although I did not, Chester explained it, too. Does the media understand that? I know it's a little anticlimactic. If we do nothing, we've bought property. Is that good? I guess that's probably about right.
We've already paid for it. It's always...
Well, that's true.
That is not a time as of the essence. That's kind of like a suggested time to get it done. We really do need to work towards that, but if it's a day or two, one way or the other, it's not going to be...
The reason I ask that question is that I would like this property closed when I have appropriation of the property. I think that actually had that...
We've got 500.
So it's hard to say now, you know, it's not appropriate on time, and that can be discouraged when it goes on openly.
Chester, anything else? No, sir. So what we're doing tonight is hearing more information, and also, let me sort of frame this, too. We've got to pick up, there's a master plan as part of the plan for the part of grant. There's a preliminary budget on there. We're not, if we do that, we're not committing to spend that money. The only thing we're doing is buying the property. The decision to do whatever we do out there will be a separate decision that will be made somewhere in the future. That will be made tonight. We don't have enough information to do that. The information, if I understand that correctly, Chester, the plan that Mike is, is something that we have to submit for the part of grant to say, "Hey, we do have a plan here. Here's what we think we're going to do," and we could change that. And as far as the phasing into this, we could do that over whatever period of time this board chooses to do. So we're not, that's not a decision we're making.
And neither, Mr. Chairman, is that a decision on the amount of money. You see, this is what you have to submit to the part of that application. It's not a hard and fast budget saying we have to spend X amount of dollars, so we get the budget part of it. I'm sure y'all can explain that, too.
I want to talk about, for the media, they had to do a preliminary number of the total cost of this phase, the project, $1,117,000, of which the $500,000 part of grant would be subtracted. So we're not allocating that money when we agreed to this plan. We're just agreeing to send this plan in.
You're going to be approving if that $670,576 can be supplied by the county, is what we need to say. That's what you're going to be doing with the basic facts and assurances, is assuring them that the county has the means to come up with the public for the grant, to match the grant. We...
Three years.
Yeah, three years.
Three years.
Three months.
What you say, the part of county has to be matched dollar to dollar in cash on the line, so it's all about buying the house, all the way up to the office, over my last district of Bush.
So with that said, I guess let's jump in. Mike, I'll turn it over to you. This is what he has called the approval of the basic facts and assurances.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners? Yeah, what you have before you is the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, part of the grant application, and it's something that they require the basic facts and assurances of the property as well as of the county. And this is basically stating your federal employer ID number, states that banking county will be the applicant, states that Mr. Jack Horton will be the contact person. Mr. Jack Horton is also the chairman manager on here, and chief elect official will be Mr. Horton, Chairman Horton. The type of project that we'll be entering into will be acquisition and development, because we're going to be purchasing the property as well as developing the property. Site control, it will be owned by the local government. There's also options of leasing property for 25 years or more, as well as having the property donated through the easement, which of course is not part of ours. And then the cost ran to the nearest dollar, which is, we came up with that, I came up with that cost number based on conversations with Seth and Mr. Horton, basically, as to what we were wanting to do. And with the part of funds, and speaking with Mrs. Luanne Ryan, she said we did not, you know, we've talked about actually doing, potentially, doing four fields at one time. However, this Luanne mentioned to me that we do not want to put anything on this basic facts and assurances or in the budget that we don't want to be held to. So in other words, if we put four fields on here and put a cost of, just say arbitrary cost of $2 million per se, that would require the county to come up with that $1.5 million. So we do not want to do that. So I've limited, we've limited this budget to two fields, as well as the wastewater and wastewater utilities that would be required to support the two fields, along with a playground, a multipurpose field, which is inexpensive to build, that would allow for open space as well as soccer, lacrosse, or anything like that, or any kind of open field play. The playground, a small portion of the playground, you know, what we're showing on here, there'll be other playgrounds that are proposed for the site. They've put live pavement green on path that would be, that would go all the way around the golf fields, off the fields, about $2,500, $2,300, to pay for that. As well as one thing part of requires us to do, part of the project is to give ADA accessibility to the fields. So we have included the concrete sidewalks that will be required to carry a handicapped accessible person from the parking lot to the play area of the field where they can watch the spectator. As well, I've added on here the parking lot that would be required to take care of two fields. So that's a minimal amount that we felt like we could do, and still, as application for part of the grant. Also in there includes the contingency of 5%, which part of allows, as well as the land acquisition, which comes out to approximately $1,472.67. So the total project cost is $1,117,576, as funded on this preliminary project cost. And the part of grant plus would be for $500,000. So the total load will match, the county will have three years to come up with, would be $670,576.
Can you say two fields? You mean two culverties or two, just two fields?
No, two individual fields of the four that would be in the culverties. So it would be two of the golf fields.
Just a, for clarification, this is telling the folks that part of, this is the minimum that you're willing to do.
That's right.
And that you're willing to be held to.
That's right.
And you're free to do more, and the intention is to do more.
The intention is to do more.
But this is the minimum that you're committing to do.
Is that correct? And if you look at the numbers, that's the number which really is required for us to get full time on that, of all the grants.
That's what part of tells us, is to get it as close to the $500,000 as you can, not to, no project equals exactly a million dollars, but they want to get as close to that million dollar target as we can.
You did prove it.
Yeah.
But we can apply to part of grant again next year.
Next year, yes, sir, we'll be allowed to go after more part of funding, and it will include areas on the property that are not a part of this application as we do. So we'll have two fields now, playgrounds, so we can add...
Which would be two...
We can add two more fields later, yes, sir. We could add a splash pad. The plan, we've got a hardcore, hard surface sport court that would be for basketball, pickleball, things like that. You could even play tennis or volleyball. So that, prison golf course. And she said you basically want to have three new facilities proposed for the project for the second request. So three of those would be, three of those new things would be the splash pad, the, what nature...
And another thing, this, the number of six, seventeen, and these numbers you have up here, those are, those are not hard. In fact, that's what I've confirmed him before. They were, I think we can save some money off of those when we actually do the project. And I think we can do more than what you've got at least of the money. That's my opinion.
And if we, and if there is more money left over, there are more things that we can do, that's fine. However, the county will be held to, as this is a number. So in other words, if this project cost came in at half of what we're showing here, then yes, we could use those funds to handle the things on the project.
And no offense intended, I think these numbers are high, too. I think the total number you looked at, it's tripped me a ton. I felt like what you talked about, global break, I'm pretty surprised what was happening. We think we can do it for a lot less than that, but if we can, that's good. I mean, that's what we want to do.
But the bottom line is, we get $1,100,000 to apply to the recreation facility, and it's going to cost us $670,000. That's what we're going to do, and we're going to get the most we can out of six, seventeen, because they're that amount.
I think the intent of the project here is to give the county as much flexibility as possible, with the understanding that this is not a limitation for the county, this is essentially a statement of the minimum that it will be.
Yeah, because we have possibly, they put in a million or a million five in grants to this new recreation.
And we, and I've said before, and I want to say it hopefully a few more times, because I don't want to upset the fire, but we've got the commitments of our sticker representative, Roger West, and our state Senator Jim Davis, that they will go back for us to see that we get this money, and we're going to...
We'll have...
We're going to ask that they do that, and yeah, if we can spend 50 cents and get a dollar, that's...
And based on preliminary meetings with Ms. Ryan, given from who handles our region for the part of funding, based on preliminary meetings, preparing, going through the scoring criteria, we do believe we'll have the score that will add up to a large amount of money to give us a money, a money, a profit, so, otherwise we wouldn't be more happy.
Gentlemen, any other questions, Mr. Woodley?
How long will it take to know that? I mean...
They say around March or so is when they have the...
We'd get a hard date on that. We'd love to vote on that. When that committee just want to make, we might, we might show up.
When do you have to have this?
January 31st. It's due by January 31st. Full application. And the master plan matured that you have on your front end as well is part of the application, as well as comprehensive master plan that was done back in 2005, will be part of the application, because there's numerous places in the comprehensive master plan that the commissioners did not adopt, however, has been, has been done for the county, for the countywide recreational needs. It mentions numerous times in the master plan, it would be more about that. So that's a good thing. So because of that, we didn't have to go back and do an update to the master plan. Normally, we would have to go and do an update in 2000 to the comprehensive master plan if it's not saying there that there's any bulk in this type of recreation, so.
If you're inclined to do so, you would need to approve this North Carolina Parks Recreation Trust Fund, basic facts and assurances.
That's one page.
And authorize, given as the chair, to execute multiple copies of the same. I've got multiple copies here.
Yes, sir. The project cost is not a part, is not attached to the basic facts and assurances. I wanted you to have that in front of you, so you could see where that number came from. The project cost will be a part of the overall application, because this is a plan that we will use in the application.
So Chester, what is that, what you're asking us to consider approval of that? This one page document authorized, you decided the same on behalf of you, as to make this a part of the application?
That's right.
Should we do that prior to discussion on purchase of the property? Or the tip hat? I think as a matter of course, if there's some question about whether or not to move forward with purchase, you can certainly put this particular issue off and do that. Otherwise, you can make that, you can go ahead and approve it, but you can certainly unapprove it if you choose to. It's just a matter of preference.
I guess what you're saying, if we don't go ahead and approve it in this meeting...
It becomes a...
It seems like that is what's up to hand, isn't it?
No, it will... Yeah, I think you just hold on to it, and if you should make the decision not to go forward with the purchase of the property, then that one time you just unapprove it.
Okay.
That's what you're inclined to do, or you can simply just sit on it and wait to take that action further.
Gentlemen, what would be your favor about that?
I have a couple of questions. First, are you expecting any other costs? I'll notice on the other one.
The master plan.
The cost estimate in there.
Cost estimate that's always just property for...
We're expecting any of this. We talked about $400,000.
Yeah, yeah.
That includes, that includes design, architectural design, engineering design, environmental design, permanent, that we put archaeological, it's an estimated, it's an estimate.
I guess, in this 1.1, are we expecting anything above, beyond, but there's a tie to it here?
The 1.1 you're seeing is not included by archaeological.
Are we expecting...
Are we expecting to have to do any archaeological?
This costs us more money than what's on top of this.
On top of the 1.1, no. Yes.
We don't know.
We got an estimate today of around $45,000 to $50,000 for phase one archaeological survey of the property, which is what the Easter band, we can go ahead and move into the next test, basically.
Let's think this, this...
I just asked you...
Part of the conversation.
No, 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 I just wanted to know if there's any other costs we're expecting on this. My second question was, is just...
That's a board.
If, odds are, I'd say 90%, 99% will probably get this point, but if we don't, are we just, are we going to agree to step up to the 1.1 still? Are we going to pull off and decide on the property, or the sports case scenario?
I think that would be a decision we have to make.
At that time.
At that time.
Well, it'd have to be...
And we're really dependent on the part of that. That's why basically it's sort of tracking, it's the home field, it's part of that, and so.
I agree. I think we'll tell you.
But I think the lines consulting is agreeing to pay the $500,000. Is that what you're checking?
You can hold it. I'll take it. I've got a little discussion on it, but I can't see my pad. It's quick, I get it hung up. I'm going to back off. I don't know my game, so I'm out right now. Anyway, let me see if I can get it up. I'm seeing right here, the price on all this, we're looking at the estimate, just right at $500,000 to this project. That's on the estimate. And if we were to get a part of the grant for 50%, that would still look at $50,000 over the way it appeared to cover on the board, but we said in the notice that we can only go for $500,000 of that time.
Yes, sir, that's right. Some adds.
Well, as I say, these, I don't want to have no questions, Chester. I'm still, I'd like to ask you a meaningful question. We don't have time. Uh, first of all, I don't go out, I've got a bit of a system to you. I feel I think the property worth, I ask what the judge says, please. And where I come up with my figures, that's talking to the realtors out there, it's told me. That's the first step. And they're telling me that the property is not worth on the base market of what we give for. Well, I've not saw an appraisal, and I think that we're taking this off in mind off the tax appraisal. Am I right?
Well, we basically read the offer...
On the tax appraisal.
Then, and there was, there wasn't appraisal done. I've heard the second conversation, I think what you're talking about, there were two sales that was different pieces of property, and we based, I mean, we wrote down, so we make the offer with that figure.
Okay.
And I think we did that based on appraisal, we did that based on record, and Chester, we're all going to take our thousand dollars.
No offense, Mr. Chairman, on this, we had a good deal since period of time, but we require, find out as much as we can find out, basically. And I would be the first to do anything I can, I feel, get my community, get the children, get them on the mic, you know? And I see where all of this right here plugs in. I mean, I wrote down a few things I did, and not only just me, I'm talking about this board, the board prior. Look what we've done to bring in these students, and I take that seat, what we've done, we don't have mobile pleasure. We just put in a second lane with $8,000 worth of computers for our children. We just bought a couple of buses, $86,000 piece in the last couple of years for activities. We're trying to leave models, too, if you have deals with your daughter at the house. I went up there and looked at that, and I saw the building name. I know our sheriff's out here talking, we rock the large body, trying to do all he can do to come up with some ideas to save to the students. all he can do to come up with some ideas to save to us. And the only thing I'm calling, only thing I'm calling is give these things, oh, just the simple things out there. I love making caring just like everyone else you said. There is a big deal, Mr. Taylor, what you just said about Carson, that's scary. What if we have to buy this whole act of yours? What if we don't get them all the same, what if? Are we going to be looking over the next year to try to buy a million dollars? And that's what you're telling the shit. And like I say, I can't keep this bored up to several other things on here that I'm seeing. And some of this expense, such as that archaeology survey, we don't know what that's going to turn up. What if it turns up first worms, first dogs, dead insects, something, there's too many big deals about here. What I'm saying is, I said it before and I won't say it one more time, I am for growth making camp with these fall things. In fact, I'm making a motion only, but it was due to due diligence, we need to find out all we do. I'd do anything I could, help anybody that is giving, and I've got kids of my own. All I'm going to bring this out here to concentrate on this thing.
Let me say this, and I, I can just disagree. What we're considering tonight is, we're talking about the purchase of the property. Development of property is another decision for another day. We, we, and I'll, I'll give you the two extremes. We could decide, yes, we're, we're going to go ahead with this property purchase because we think that is a piece of property that is good for future development for recreation and making camp. That's what, that, that's all we're saying. That's why I said that upfront, we're not, I'm not going to raise my hand and vote that we're going to pin five million dollars out there because we've not made that decision. Personally, I don't think it's going to cost near that to do it. I don't think Mike does either, but that's another discussion for another day. Yes, to do the figures, he does, that's fine. But we could buy that property and then decide, we're not going to develop it now, we're, we're going to, we're going to do that sometime in the future. The other decision is, we, we want to develop it all right now. We're going to do the whole thing and we're going to get a bid on it and we're going to do the whole thing and we're going to get these part of grants again. Or anything in between. The thing about the part of the grant, and I, I agree with Mr. Tate, are we locked in to do anything if we don't get the part grant yet? No, because we don't have to do anything out there. We've got forty-eight acres and we've got people walk on it and make walking trails and fish and that's all we're doing.
We could turn it into a mixer.
Yeah, but I feel like.
And as far as the price, like I say, you know, that, that was, that was the decision we made at that time based on the best information we had, based on the appraisals that we saw, based on the tax value. And I've seen those two, there was an article paper, I've got the same call as you did about the two sales that were less than this, but those sales were not on this kind of property that's on the river that lays like this does. And I'm not a real estate broker, I'm sitting in front of. But that was the, the due diligence we're doing, just decided this property will suit our recreation needs, if it will suit what we were, what we made the offer by.
Give me mine, just give me mine, okay?
Are we eligible to apply for a grant? Yes, we are. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You sure can, you can do just.
If we do nothing but mine, we can get two seventy-five back. This property, the house, is two seventy-five.
The soil feeding has not been mentioned to me about this. If, if we went out anywhere, I don't care where we went wrong, we bought forty-eight acres of land and had a grading, the grading cost would be double or triple what we've been for property. Grade something new. It's hard to play, but where we did it till the century, but it's hard to play it up here sometimes.
Yeah, I know, and.
But the grading cost, the grading cost would be, if you find, I don't think you can find a place, you couldn't afford to grade it. You didn't ever find a place.
And we got, we're, we're jumping around. This is all good discussion and it needs to happen. We're talking about this phase one thing and we realize the Eastern Band has come back and said, we're going to ask for you to do the phase one. They want that done just to identify what's on the property. They've said we could still go ahead with that plan, but they don't.
They're supporting the property.
They're supporting the property. I would say that any property we buy that's flat and is a bottom land is going to require our favor. What we could do to avoid that, we were just to buy a property like Walmart did. Spend that much money grading, which is. If all those people are going to spend, if we do this, we're going to spend millions on phase one, but it's, it's.
If the government buying this property, you'll do a phase one. Right, which means.
So to me, that's not a variable, that's a constant in this equation. If you buy a flat piece of property that is any kind of thing close to bottom land, they're going to require a phase one with this property. Indians lived here for ten thousand years. They lived all over these, they didn't live on the mountaintops ever.
That's right. There are discussions with, with Eastern Band as well as Dennis Hall and shipping. We had talked about doing the shovel shave and having an archaeologist on site, full time during construction or some of those utility quarters and whatnot. And speaking with Mr. Townsend today, the Eastern Band, you know, that would probably cost us as much if not more to do than doing the phase one. So regardless of whether we were doing the phase one or we were having an archaeologist full time on site during construction, we're still going to be spending the money for archaeology. So the phase one is not necessarily costing us more money as it is trying to be proactive and responsible to develop the site in a, in a, in a responsible way to minimize the disturbance of the cultural property.
Man, you're right, you're on board. I appreciate what you've said and done. I'm, I'm getting in on the extreme tail end of this whole concept and I do support, I've talked a lot, that we, ball fields are desperately needed in this county. And I think the issue is simply is this the right piece of property for proposed plans? Now, I have some issues with that and I, and I expressed some concerns initially, Alex Jackson, when you guys did an excellent job without the wastewater. There's one thing in your master plan that concerns me is use of the existing wastewater system or the headquarters.
For the clubhouse.
Yeah, and that'll be under a ball field.
Well, we would just use a small portion of it. It was, it was approximately fifteen hundred gallon per day system is what we're estimating right now, rather large system. I mean, it's a clubhouse, so we would only, we would only need a hundred gallon per day system for that office.
And that's a viewpoint in overall scheme of things. I appreciate what you've all done in getting those issues resolved. And the thing that concerns me, since we're just talking about the purchase of this property is, and I just casually asked the Pimple guy, have we actually had a market appraisal on this property? And I'm not, anybody that's involved in it, there is no market appraisal on this property. You know, this may be the ideal property, forty-seven acres, well, we're not going to use, we're going to use what, about thirty acres of this property?
About twenty-six, I believe.
Twenty-six acres to do all the improvements, to do all the improvements we would need to do.
Then we would be using the entire property. That would be about twenty-six acres would be disturbed or so if you were to take, but that would, but then we would, you know, there wouldn't be any disturbance required for the, for the business golf course and, you know, very minimal disturbance, but have a little disturbance.
And I had some questions tonight. I wrote down a little piece of paper and I've been, because I've been thinking about this all weekend, talking to people. And what the main thing is what's this going to cost us in the long run to develop this property? And I've been looking at the initial estimate here for the part of the grant, you know, wow, that's, you know, that's pretty good through all of my, my, but I only opened my email about an hour before the meeting and I was in shock.
Did you see the bottom dollar?
When I saw the bottom dollar. And I'm in the construction business, so you, you've made your best professional estimate on this thing. And I appreciate that, that's what engineers do, I don't work with engineers all the time. But I was for, I mean, absolutely, if, if we don't max this thing out, there's no reason to buy it. Is the way I look at it. We want to buy, this property laying out there now is an isolate, it's, it's, it's pathetic the way it looks now.
It needs to be.
And obviously, current owners can't afford that, they're not interested in doing anything. But four point nine million, if that's a true figure to develop this thing out in a short period of time, I don't want the pay, the deal that's scheduled is on. What, has that been candid around any?
A little bit, but we haven't come to any.
We didn't make any determination as far as, and I said, we could, we could decide we're going to do it all at one time. There's some wisdom in doing, a lot of, like the lighting, if you do all the lighting at one time, it's about thirty percent less than if you do it in two pieces. So if we decide there's some wisdom in doing it all at once, then, then we could, being this thing, I agree with you, I don't, I think that way. But, you know, again, I'm not going to correct you, there's no way, there's no way to know, that's another.
And a lot of that cost estimate is also based on, you know, worst case scenarios at some points, because I don't want to tell you that it's going to cost you two and a half million dollars for this project if you come in. That's the last thing I'm going to do. As a professional in this industry, you know that.
Yeah.
And, you know, however, that construction cost estimate is based on real numbers and experience in the field doing this type of thing.
We could do this over two years, three years, five years.
And there hasn't been a detailed design done, you know, I've done preliminary design to get those numbers with silver and water and storm drainage, grading, roads, erosion control, there's a lot that goes into it and you can see it's itemized in that process.
Excellent, great. This master plan is a, is an excellent document. Let's see all the quickening, I think that's appreciated. This is, thanks for a lot of questions. And then our initial due diligence period, one of the questions we had is we needed something in writing from the Eastern Band.
That's right.
Has that been?
We have gotten something in writing, Mr. Quest, in the phase one archaeological survey.
And without the results of the phase one, then we don't know. I mean, we can speculate all day. We know that was a heavily, there was an evening tide across the creek there, it made camp ground.
In nineteen sixty-three.
That was the same question I had Paul and that was, and Jack actually talked, the guy that sent the email to Mike, Jack talked to his boss today. If I understand it right, and Jack's going to share it tonight, they're just asking for a phase one to, that will assist us in the construction process. They're not asking for anything after that. Jack, you, you explain.
Correctly, I'm, I'm, I'm off a little bit here, Mike, but we really have to get solid by the State Historic Preservation Office, ship over if you talk to us, that's the name in the hall, Steve Baggot, he wanted to save his life one time, but, but the State Historic Preservation Office is going to defer to the Eastern Band for any additional resources that they will think about on the property. So basically, they work hand in hand with them and they, basically what, what Chris Allen said, the Eastern Band's charge of their private historic preservation offices, they would like, everybody knows there's Indian artifacts out there. And everybody knows that with any place you got background in, you are going to find Indian artifacts, that's obvious. They don't want to build a phase one to find out if there's any artifacts out there, they want to build a phase one, build a phase one just to see how, how much proliferation there is out there and what. And then also, in future development, if there are areas that you don't have to worry about, that you don't have to worry about, any places can already be served and be documented and you don't have to worry about anything beyond that. If you do find an area where there's been a lot of artifacts around and you decide you want to build that building on something, this one on the sheet down, put it levels, there was your part of your phase two, all that portion of it, but not an entire lot. The big expense, you know, is the passage to the phase one, the big expense is the phase two and then a phase three. And here with the airport, the loss of that historic survey out there was tremendous because it was not only a phase one, it was a phase two. And all the property had to be stripped, everything had to be identified and mapped, marked, and then all it covered back up. The main concern that the Eastern Band has is that all of this is served at grave sites. And so if you find an area that, that looked like, looked like it might likely be a grave site, then I'm going to ask you to forget of here anything else, they want you to avoid that. And well, all they can do is just fix it and cover it, document it, cover it back up. They don't even have pictures taken of those things. So I've got to answer to you, and I think Mike can verify this, that they want to work with us because they like to see this property and public domain for use for purposes like this instead of some development that lives in there without having to comply with the federal oversight historic preservation rules. Private law facilities in there, they can just rip the whole thing up without regard to that. So they would really like to work with us and the question I asked him publicly, if we do a phase two, and it goes a phase one, this, are you going to require us to do a phase two? He said not unless you find something in an area we want to be disturbing.
And that's, and that's only if there's not another alternative. In other words, for instance, if there was some grave sites they found that were going to be located directly under our concession stand slash mountainous lines, okay? And we said, okay, since there's grave sites here, let's look at moving that concession stand outside of the perimeter of the field, okay? And everybody said, no, you know, that just really breaks up everything. You really want that concession stand to be inside the clover root, to be located centrally, because that's kind of the focal point of the whole clover root. So at that point, what they would require us to do is come in and do a phase two to identify exactly what it was under there.
What Jack said, that would just be on the thirty by thirty.
Just for that, just for that section, we would, that would not include doing a phase two and a phase three for the entire site. If we said, hey, there's nothing else, we want this concession stand right here. So they were requesting a phase two to determine what was there and then they require a phase three, which would be to actually excavate those remains or whatever may be cultural finds that were there. They would, they would, the phase three to that. And that would only take into account that small area, it would not be going to stretch across the.
Mike, you do have the right to, to go back to the drawing board and rethink, move.
Sure. And that's what they want us to do. That's, they understand that this, that we're in a preliminary stages here. And Eastern Band, you know, they want, they want us to develop this property and they want us to develop it responsibly. So what they're asking from us is that we do this phase one, up front, instead of trying to do it in the field and jog these utility corridors where they may go, they, they would rather us come in, look at it now, find the areas that have already been disturbed and say, okay, this area, this area, this area has already been disturbed, you can do whatever you want. And these are, these are your sensitive areas.
Let me ask you about that. When you do a phase one, you do that in blocks, right? Like the squares and.
Tons of it.
Tons of it. So if, if you do this grid, this grid and this grid and they say, there's nothing there. If you want to dig in China, put a building and do whatever, you, then you can do that there with nothing else done.
That's right.
So that identifies those areas as well that they, and I'm like you, I think, I think any flat area, we're going to find Native American artifacts.
For instance, in the area where the manate pond has been dug on the southern portion of the property that we're going to be abandoned, you know, like in that area, there's been some utilities put in and there's been, there's some storm drainage, there's some sewer utilities as well, they've dug the pond. So we're going to find out in that area where the adult fields are, that we're probably going to be able to do whatever we want in that area, because it's already been disturbed so much as, you know, the, the cultural findings there are, are going to be gone.
Based on memory, even when they built that golf course, even down next to it, they've done a lot of work down there.
And that's what could come out of this phase one is that the entire property has been disturbed enough, you're not really worried about it. There is, there is an opportunity, there is an opportunity if we decided that we wanted to go for, there is an opportunity, if we did decide that we wanted to do a little bit of due diligence where instead of going with the full blown of the phase one, and speaking with the consultant who has done some work for the county in the past, there is an opportunity if you want to do some, some background research as well, some reconnaissance out there, we're using some shovel testing as well to determine what we're going to find out there.
Mike, you were having an affidavit from somebody that did tremendous down grading and work out there that suggested that line share had been restored and would have that. Would that make sense to present that to the Eastern Band and say, this is the information we have?
I think that would be something we would be the fifth consultant that would be putting instead of that report. You know, regardless, they want us to, they want us to do the phase one.
We're going to do the phase one.
We've tried to, that's what we've done over the last month. I've spent a lot of time working with Russell and Tyler Howe and Dennis Hall, trying to get around the phase one. And so we've come full circle back to, we just need to do the phase one. So we've already gone around and tried and get around the phase one. And we're talking with cloud desk, we're talking fourteen, sixteen inches.
Phase one.
Survey, the phase one survey, it will look below the cloud desk. They'll, they'll excavate far enough to determine if there's any, there is one, it could be at the one, could be at the one meter deep. Survey, the phase one survey, it will look below the cloud debt, they'll, they'll excavate far enough to determine if it's there, it could be, it could be at the one, could be at the one meter deep, that's about the deepest they're gonna go down.
Would it be prudent to do that prior to buying the property?
To do the phase one.
The phase one.
That, that's, that's an option?
I, I believe so, yes, I, I mean, normally in the due diligence process, we would do something like this, in case something came up, in case, you know, there's too many burial sites out there, I would say, because if they came back to us, if the phase one, the phase one came back to us and said, you're gonna have to bring four foot fill out here on the site, so that you stay away from, from burial remains.
Let's take, let's take the worst case scenario, let's say that they do, let's say they do, let's say they do the phase one, and we find out that's a graveyard, the whole thing's a graveyard, not like it is, that's not the way the charities did it, but.
That's possible, that's a possibility, we wouldn't want a graveyard, we do not want a graveyard.
Then you're gonna have difficulty.
Now, still, if it was a graveyard, we would still be able to develop the site, they may require us to bring in three feet of fill, for instance, and to bring three feet of fill across that site, you know, you're talking quite a bit more money than I'm showing you. My cost estimate is estimating about a foot in fill across the site.
You can't fill the flood plain. You can, uh, balance that then, first.
Unless that property's on, unless that dirt's on your property, okay?
I'm not sure.
You know, we're just blocking the flood, it's out of dirt.
Did you see that flood plain line on the map?
They can't fill it that way.
Unless the property, unless it comes off your property, in a flood plain, well, it's a dead area, then, you can't, there's, the whole place you can't, there's one section of this again.
We would be allowed to remove the organics.
Or bring in, or lose.
And we've got to remember that grant money is taxpayer money there. This is not how the grant we're applying for. It's funded by tax dollars.
But that money's already been taken. If, 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 they're gonna, they're gonna allocate to somebody.
Yeah.
That's right.
Just like Roger West said, he said, he said that money's continually gone to the East Greenfield and very little has come back up this way. So it is my tax money that I'd like to be turned back.
Very much.
But it's not, we're nowhere off it. We've taken that tax money.
I think if you were talking about the entire site, you know, you're talking a lot of money. For, for, say, for instance, we need to do a phase three for the concession area. So it's about fifty area, I think, and it could cost somewhere in the range of twenty-five to thirty-five thousand.
Mike, is it a question of, of the areas that are gonna require grading below the cloud depth?
Say, yes.
Isn't really the ultimate question is having a look at the areas where we're going to be doing grading below the cloud depth?
That's right, that's right.
How much of the project requires grading below the cloud depth of the total forty-six eight?
That's a, that's a hard number to make it put down.
I mean, is there a guess? Right now, you're looking at concession stand areas primarily.
That, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make is we may be talking about not forty-six eight, but really something much smaller. Is that fair to say?
I mean, if I, if I've quantified the subsurface corridors for utilities that would be used, I would estimate that we're gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three inches up the surface of the water problem.
I've worked with the archaeological department. We got a couple of projects that are pretty good to work with. Matter of fact, I think we'll all work over Eastern Band, DRC.
DRC.
They, if we decided, if the board decided to go ahead and, and use your option, which is, what was your, what was your option of another sixty days? You can do that. We've already talked and they're, they're allowed to do that if you want it. The other one, another thing I would say is that PRC is good. And if you get into a phase one and you get halfway through a phase one and in the worst case scenario, as Mike says, this thing is full of grades, you say, a little fun boys, we can go through with it. PRC is kind of comfortable to deal with because you don't have to spend any more money on this if you're not gonna use it. So, so I'm probably gonna go on. But it looks like it's a reasonable amount to finish the phase one and go on with your deal or just focus on the other.
So, Jack, would you recommend deal out of the schools? I read that with the mayor of here that I've been with. Would you recommend that this board tonight to approve to go ahead and put full phase one or to just approve what Mike said was the lemon area of Constance?
If, if it were my choice, I would go ahead if you're really intent about this part of you, if you're what you intend to buy for, you're gonna have to do a phase one on Hall of it in some point in time. If I had the choices of those two, my recommendation would be to go into the phase one.
And, and he said that it would probably, it would take around three weeks to do the side work for the phase one across the entire site. So within three weeks, do, do.
I just thought something, not, not to write a suggestion, but again, I'm, I'm reading her body language, her comments, and I think we might all be on the same page. What we did is, let's approve what you need from part of grant. We need to go ahead and then, let's approve in this document, let's approve in the master plan, which I agree with Paul, I think he's an excellent guy, he did a super job on it. Let's approve that. Then let's, if we agreed that the land's still on the table, let's vote to do the phase one. I think that makes sense to do that and tell them that, that we need that extra sixty days. And if we, if we start getting into it, it looks bad, then we pull the plug and we, we move on to something that.
If you're, if I had to do that, I, I would recommend that we have a very, very close session, like advise you as to the mechanics of what needs to be done to cover the what is in the process. We have a grand total of nine hours left in five hours to accomplish this.
Yeah.
We, we'll get it done, but we do need to address contingency.
Is, is that? I'm not asking for a vote, I guess I'm asking for a consensus. Is that something we can agree to do?
Now, you're talking, you said earlier sixty days for the full blown phase one?
Yes, yeah. I feel, I feel certain that, I feel certain that Linda Hall and, and Tyler House would work with us to get the phase one reviewed and approved in, in sixty days.
And if it takes a full sixty days and we're only asking for sixty more chances, does any of this boards have to deliberate their conveni?
What Mike is saying is we're gonna know in about three weeks.
You're gonna know. We'll know in three weeks. Well, at, at the end of three weeks, the field work will be done. At that time, it's going through the, they take, of putting together the full blown phase one survey report as well as, once you get that recorded on, it has to be sent over to Linda Hall at the State Historic Preservation Office as well as over to Tyler House, Eastern Band, that office to.
The thing about the weather though, I mean, because they cannot be working like they, like saying we are in the middle of February March, April, excellent.
I think Jack may have mentioned sixty days to, to sell.
Sixty days is a quote that we got from the DRC.
I think that, I think that's what we, we have a pretty good idea we can. Yeah, and what, what I would say to you is, is if he wants to sell and we find we need seventy days instead of sixty, I think, I think what we're gonna find is we're gonna get through the issue.
So what, what Paul was asking is, we, we will have information to make a decision within three weeks if we give ourselves eight, then, then we're a catalyst out of that. But I think that's all we.
Yes.
And while we're spending money, does anybody, do we need a market appraisal on this property? I'm a bank man.
Well, the bank have more than current appraisal.
They have it. Current is the last year.
Let's act, let's act.
Probably. I tell you what, man, when you pull all this, I'm for this property. But, well, I brought it up quite early.
So Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion to go ahead and first of all?
I'm, I'm making a suggestion.
To the project cost of that, go ahead and apply for part of grant.
I'm making a suggestion.
And on cost of lift. We've gotta have this in with genuine.
Yeah, I do that anyway. I'm making a suggestion that, that we go ahead and approve this, the basic facts and assurances, the master plan, and give him what he needs to go with his part of grant. I've heard enough to know I think we're gonna do the phase one. So let's just go ahead and vote to do that and give ourselves an extra sixty days. Everything's moving forward. We're not stopping anything. We're just, we're just giving ourselves a second time to get this, and quite frankly, I'd like to see that.
So you need a motion to go ahead with, this don't cost us less, but I mean, this is just.
We need a motion to approve this information, the facts, insurance, actions, assurances, and also that we need to approve the master plan.
Just as a point of clarification, Mike, if they should decide not to proceed to purchase the property, we said we pick up the phone and call folks at part of and say, go back in and say.
You need the approval of the master plan? I, I think, I, I think we need to understand.
It'll add an extra form, Charlie.
We're not assuming to be a part of.
And have your part of application.
And have your part of application by one poll.
And it gives us an extra form. It's not, it's not gonna be detrimental. I don't think we're gonna lose the part of grant if you don't approve that master plan. I know you haven't had much time to review it, but there's nothing in that master plan that's gonna take you the skin off of your neck. There's not, that's right. There's nothing in that master plan that says you have to do anything or it's, it's basically a preliminary master plan of what the proposed development.
Weren't you expecting an answer for the part of grant by March?
Yeah.
That would give you an answer prior to deciding whether to purchase the property or not. As to whether or not you're gonna have that.
We won't know from part of until May.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
I think what they said was they, they'd meet sometime in March to make the decision. They don't, they don't announce the.
I had thought he said they'd announce in March. No, we won't know until May. Then we could get another second funding cycle in August or something.
But that's, that is my recommendation, guys. We, we approve this information from part of grant and I would include the, why not get the extra form for the master plan? I think it's very well done and we are not committing anything.
And the master plan is just that. It's nothing next to stone.
And we approve that and the facts and assurances and, and then we can do the phase one.
We need a budget.
That may need to be a separate.
Well, it'll be a separate.
We need a budget amendment for the phase one because of course that money's not perfect anywhere.
Correct. And we're not talking about any money here on part of.
So it can be set for both?
I think so.
All I wanna do is clarify the appraisal. I didn't get a solid answer there. We can get one, it'll cost us four, five thousand dollars for a current market appraisal as it works there. Or to get one from the bank.
We'll actually.
What, what we did is this, what we, we get the one that the facts got and we'll see.
We could get that this week. You could, you could certainly decide whether or not you wanted to further appraisal on the site.
Yeah, we're making that be that.
Yeah, they're on that.
Great, great. I just, what is Mark's view of this property? Okay.
We need to misuse that. High to misuse is what you gotta remember on the property, not if you're a vet.
It's what you're using for. What's a high to misuse?
High to misuse the property.
What is?
I think it's recreation Brazil.
Are they part of Brazil, Harvey?
They're part of the, the link part, the link part is motorcycle track.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
The link is already going for.
Suggesting term.
And that is men.
Again, thank you, Seth, I mean, I think we're probably missing the right place.
So I'm, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the North Carolina Parks and Recreation of basic, the two thousand thirteen, twelve, thirteen basic facts and assurances as supplied by Alliance Consulting along with the marketing that has directed at the master plan for the review for the part of the grant.
You have a motion, you have a second? I go second, I, Mr. Haven. Any discussion on the motion? Make clear what we're doing. Hearing none, all effective motions signify the same eye.
Aye.
I oppose. That is unanimous. And gentlemen, my suggestion is that we proceed with the phase one. We know we've gotta do it anyway, no matter if we're good on this property, other property, wherever it might be. It makes sense to do it and have our eyes open.
Can we put a caveat, Mr. Chairman, and allow the county manager or you to enter into agreement with DRC not to exceed whatever amount of money you want to put in there? Then, I think we're talking about forty thousand.
We said between forty-two, forty-eight, so forty-eight is the maximum, but.
Say forty, that'd be a, that's a shooting. They need to work.
I can also, we can also get conditions for purpose.
Nah, you don't, they, they spoke for the work.
We do, and they have a very good rapport with Eastern Band and.
Does that mean the last?
Yeah, they're talking about just being.
Actually, Tyler Howard with Eastern Band, he contacted Paul Webb personally, warned him to be part of this property.
To give you an idea of how they work, they came over, they, they asked us to put in the sewer lines, the sewer lines without all the school. They said we need to have archaeologists on site when you're doing the lines and if you see anything. And so they have somebody there all the time. Paul Webb came out from, from DRC, just spent the first day there and said, I'm not seeing anything. You don't need to be paying me and I won't call them to help. There's no reason for me being here. And so he went back all the way.
That's, we need someone like that.
And that's the word.
First, we're likely to get Paul what you get. Gentlemen, the motion is to, to, to approve the part of grant information and also the.
We done done.
I mean, I'm sorry, is to approve the phase one and you were asked to put it. Uh, two, certain Matt, you wanna amend your motion?
I didn't make a motion on it, but I was just asking, we need to put the limit on it. Not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars.
And the budget amendment, the master plan.
Yeah. Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Second, okay, second, I'm gonna take.
And another caveat, if we can, we'll be saying part of the motion or, you know, if, if he decides, whoever's out there, if he decides that we can pull the plug and do it ASAP, we can, which we're gonna put. So that's what they did, you know, we did that on top making, we did it on a couple of places when he said, I'm waiting my time. And he, he will be on it. I, I really believe in him. Yeah. So that is a motion that we not to exceed to authorize the county manager to enter into agreement along with our county attorney and chairman for a phase one and not to exceed expense of forty-two thousand dollars.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions?
Yes, yes.
From, from our fund balance. Undesignated fund balance.
Fund balance.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
I oppose. That motion passes unanimously. And thank you for the life of discussion.
Oh, yeah. It's smart.
It's smart. And I think I'd say for the press, I, I certainly view this as a, as a moving forward with project. I think we're moving forward cautiously with, with the project. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask, I would ask the honor and those involved to give us some consideration.
Your Honor, I assume that implied in there maybe. It's, it's actually not. But what, what I would recommend is that we have a very, very close session so that I advise you have to the logistical steps and before you give a.
Can you do that right now?
I think we do.
Second.
Motion second, all the papers.
Aye.
Vote, deserve the attorney time. Okay.
Five remain.
We're gonna do, yeah, we, we, how long do we need?
Five minutes.
Need to go, Chris Boggs, if you wanna do.
My son plays today. I mean, I'm, I've done assistant coach there, so if y'all, I don't, I don't wanna hold processes.
What are we allowing? We're gonna talk about. You know, we, we can do his.
Back up on the motion, I backed up.
The person that we're gonna be working with won't even be available late third.
Okay. We withdrew on the motion, we'll send it, we'll turn it over to you.
First of all, thank you, guys, for even consideration of this project. Now on to another one.
And gentlemen, let me set the stage, this, this will be, I guess, more of a reminder for us and all this due to it. When we decided to go ahead and approve, we decided not to hire a general contractor and let them handle the whole thing. We decided basically to be the general contractor ourselves to save that money and bid this out in parts, three main parts, one being pool, two being bath out, three being the concrete. You need to do three different things. You bid out two of three. And in addition to that, there's some other decisions we have to make along the way that weren't decided upfront because we didn't bid everything after we got the contract. That's why Seth is coming back to us a few more times here in the process for these additional options. We have Seth.
Um, the, the first order business, you, you kinda have a packet there. Um, it's got a few things on it. Uh, the top being a change order proposal in a previous meeting about putting a heater on the pool. Um, pool is very cold whenever we first fill it up and it's, it's actually uncomfortable for about the first month that, that it's out there.
Did you actually lay that cold yet?
No, I'm not.
Um, but anyway, as, as you see the change order, um, and in this change order, it also prepares us for a, for a future slide. If we, if we vote to do it now, good, but it, uh, it's something that we need to get in the concrete work, uh, or underneath the concrete before we, it's something we don't wanna go back and decide we wanna, we wanna slide in a couple of years and hope to go back and tear the concrete up. So we're doing the prep work now.
Let me explain, this wasn't an oversight on Seth's part. This came about, we had basically an information meeting and Commissioner Haven and myself, if you recall, we met with you about this and going through it. So we noticed in that process or the question came up, uh, because members of the public have been asking, is there gonna be a heater ever put in now? It's got a, some type of heater. And we asked that question and the answer was no, that it wasn't in there. And we asked him at that meeting if he would give these figures in that twenty steps, so.
Yes. Um, so as you see there, uh, the change order that, that we need to vote on tonight, um, it includes, uh, the pump slide, which will get filled into the pump room that, and they're gonna start work hopefully, uh, the end of this week and, and go through the, the next couple of weeks. Um, the heater there for forty-six oh two, uh, the propane pool heater with loop valves that, that's the piping, uh, that the plumbing work for is six hundred. And install the underground piping from the pump house to the pool and, and put the box in, in the concrete to, to prepare it for the slide use. That's seven hundred and to revise the plans is, is an extra thousand dollars. Um, it has to be something that, that's engineered and she has to get permitted through, uh, through our county and things. We have to resubmit the plans, um, as such showing, uh, the changes. And that, that comes to a total of seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy cents.
The others, Mr. Chairman, you don't do at the same time or look at the same time?
He's got that and I believe fence, Seth.
Yeah, the, the other, the other thing, the other parts of this package, um, I have you three different types of fencing proposals, um, and they range from twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars down to sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, the, the upper end is pool, iron gate, ornamental fence around everything and the, and the dividing fence. Um, there is a, a midline proposal of twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-one cents, and that's a combination of, of both. Uh, as you pull up to the pool, you see the orn, ornamental fence and the, uh, the steel fence would actually be the dividing fence in between the two pools. Um, that's something that the, the state is requiring us to do, but it would also have black chain link around the perimeter fence. So, so the bulk of that would be the black chain link. And then the cheaper price, the, the sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars is just chain link around the whole enclosure, everything being, being the black chain link.
And I did ask the question, the, especially for high traffic areas in the pool area where we're gonna be touching it, coming in contact with it, that the iron fence has about thirty percent more life.
Yes.
Than, than chain link. And I, I drove out there today and looked, of course, that chain link fence that's out there has been there since.
Rare.
Since Noah was a child. And it is bent and twisted and has holes in it and all that kinda thing. I don't think we put that in the required fence to go between the pool, but I would be opposed to that, though, I think.
Yes, I agree.
So we at least, I think we need to go with that middle option, which is the iron fence in those areas and it puts the chain link around the perimeter, which is gonna have best contact. Either that or. For the iron all the way around.
And in the end of your proposals, um, I had, I had basically brought, uh, y'all aware of, of one of the slides, um, and I have a couple more options. Um, they're, they're bigger and in the, the very back one is a double playground slide. Rockland City has it on their pool, um, that goes down into it. And that, that originally came about that, that I was asked to get some posts to bring ours up where it's, it's a little bit better than theirs. Um, but the playground slide, it, it has to go into eight feet of water because there is a drop off at the end. And that's where we're getting into, uh, the only place that, because our swim team, it, it's hard for us to utilize the deep end for a slide, uh, future or anywhere because that's where they take off from and you can't drop anything aside. So we need to bring a slide that has water on it that will bring you out at that level that you can enter into, into shallow water. Um, so that's the, the whole difference in, in the slides there. Um, the, the slide that I would recommend that's going with is, is the cheapest and it, it's the best, um, it's the one that they sell the most of. It's the, um, they, they call their, their best for the money. It originally started, um, started out as twenty-two thousand dollars and, uh, after negotiating with her a little bit more, uh, we got it down to eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Again, the one in the, the middle, that twenty-three thousand is, I guess, just a little bit longer slide, is what they.
It is. It, it's about, about seven feet longer, uh, in total, the slide.
And the back one is the one that they have at the swing kind of pool.
Yes.
And that's a double slide, but it doesn't have any water and the, the, the.
One in the deep end, which, which that, that does not work for us. We would have to, have to change some things out to, uh, create to be able to work.
So gentlemen, these, these are decisions that, that Mr. Adams asked us to make.
Direct commission, say.
Direct commission, I went to the meeting, they, without question, recommended that we do the, the heater, that's the first change over there, and I, I was a circle in trouble with that. They recommended the better fencing option. They recommended the iron fence all the way around the twenty-six. I, I probably would lean more towards the twenty, just because it saved us six a week somewhere else, maybe we were saved six. And it would accomplish the same thing, I think. Am I missing?
No, I, I agree with, if, if I had to give a suggestion, I would go with, I would go with.
I've gotta tell you, that's, that's going against the direct commission, direct commission one, so that's what, so that's what I obligated to tell you. But I think we would accomplish the same thing. We would replace the aging, broken, bent down fence out there with a nice black, uh, and that's coated.
It is, the interior is coated. And it also does, does a couple of things. The fence now, it comes to some grassy areas on the, on the outside, which the new pool cannot, uh, that, that dividing fence has to touch the fence on one side and the fence on the other side. So we'd have to run the dividing fence up the middle about ninety.
Oh, we did try to sign the way around there to the state and therefore it, it's staying.
They're not.
And it's one of those that just don't make no sense.
And then, and on the, the slide option.
And that should have helped by what you were fixing.
Which is, the reason that wasn't in with the original bid, um, they would put in, what was included in the pool bid that we left a couple of months ago was the, uh, water feature that was called in, in the, in the kiddie pool.
Yes.
But it did not include this, and so we decided not to make that part of the bid. We'd make that a separate decision and we left the recognition, take a look at it. And I think they have looked at options. They did recommend the one they said that the, the least expensive of three, which is the eighteen seven. Seth, uh, we sort of discussed that it was twenty-two, we went twenty-two, twenty-three and Seth gotten down to twenty thousand and change. And we sort of suggested that might be a little much, they went back and they dropped the budget and said, so that one is, that was the recommendation of the.
He's gonna do all three, Mr. Chairman, including project number one, the heater and the plumbing and all that, plus the mid-grade fence that you recommended, uh, plus the, uh, slide.
Eighteen seven, we let them have a total deal of about forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for, for all the days, for everybody. Right?
Yeah, we, we don't want to bid all that separate, the concrete will come in later. And Seth had stopped nothing from our discussions, direct mission, we've not gotten a quote on that because the concrete prices have not.
Yes, they're only holding concrete prices for thirty days right now, so they're waiting until they're, they said I can, I can give.
Not even that for concrete.
Well, and, and that's, a lot of it's gonna have to be pumped because it's, uh, you'd be going over top of the, the pipe. So that's, that's where a holdup is on the, on the concrete. I've, I've got a rough estimate of.
These are all the items to do with the pool that I'm aware, that we knew starting out that we're gonna get bids on, these, these items and then the remaining.
The, the concrete and, and the Highlands will re, or, uh, repair, will, uh, will be it.
What about propane tank? I think we mentioned that.
There, there will be a propane tank go with this here, but I can do that out of, out of operating budget.
This quarter, paint, propane.
Yes.
Operating. You take, take my bid?
Well, but it's not something that you use all the time.
Yeah, you gotta have, I mean, it's, you know, that and the fence, fence is required. The only thing you have to do is, I mean, is the slide, that's the only action there.
And let me tell you, the, the direct missions, we really intend to leave this out, it just wasn't in, we could have put that in with, with pool bid and it would be included in what we approved originally. I think their, our original thought was, well, that would, you know, save whatever that amount of money was. The direct missions idea, and I agree with them, is if you've got these water features, The direct commissions idea, and I agree with them, is if you've got these water features, you do their nice job to fix up this pool of kiddie and paraphrase Seth, but you're going to have basically just a big blank pool with nothing for the kids to do other than to swim and this end, and you're going to have water features over here, which they felt like that probably wouldn't provide.
We're going to have to be running 19-year-old kids out of the mom and their babies' area all the time.
Those definitely will well with. And if you've been to the beach or on cruise ship or wherever you've been to a pool, a slide is an extremely popular part of that pool.
I would like to comment, boys on this here, I'm a boy, you know. I have a good one, both of them, both of them all at once, but what I'd like to do is the boat and everything set up, the slide, and I'd like to go down that slide, get it less expensive, because I see right here, it will go both half, and save $900 right now on my back, and install the net sets up here. Let's see, that's free installation.
Well, they send people with us and they work with our, they send two people and then I supply two people, which our maintenance guys would go up and do the actual physical labor to install it.
The only thing I'm just saying is if we do decide to do it now, we're more safe than I would.
That's correct.
If we don't wait till later, it's all right.
There's no value in waiting later, we decided not to.
What are we going to do?
I'm doing my first, that bill will happen, that's where we take the budget right now. We can vote on all these things together or we can vote on Seth.
Let me just ask this right here, let me just ask this, you know, just vote on going, because I did enough credit to save that money, that's all right with me.
Wait, that's.
Somebody, all right, I'd like to make a motion that we include this water slide in the pool, do it now, save the money.
And are you, is your motion including doing the change order of the heater and the middle option fence?
I can do that for him. Let's just go in, just see what I already said. I'm making the change order here to build everything, check to the hand, and sign a savings, nine hundred dollars, for that figure, and have the intention to make your deal.
So your motion is to do the heater change order option 7642, to do the middle fence option of 20,884.
As you recommended, right?
And then to do the slide and do it now and save $900.
Right, $18,757.
Not the double slide, right, wrong, for the $18,000, by the way, the least expensive, the least expensive.
18.757.
Do we have a second to Mr. Ritter? We have a motion and a second, any discussion, gentlemen? It will come out, yes, but if we do include, it will come out of. Two minutes ago, not two minutes, pardon, I said that. Pardon. It would come out of the committee. Any other discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. That motion passes, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for, thank you for doing a good job. As the construction coming, Mr. Ritter on the booth, yes.
It should be done by February 23rd. Their sheet rock, they're starting, it's drying, trying to get dry today, so let me paint it.
And.
Lockers are in.
I love it. I, the layout is going to be so much safer than what it has been.
That should finish.
You want to go ahead and approve this contract before we go into closed session, so Mr. Ritter can go back.
Oh, that's on the.
Thank you guys.
Seth, I want to say thank you for doing a good job in just like getting the price on that slide. I mean, that's, we wound up saving us about $4,000 on that one item. That's, I expect whether we end this 48 acres out there, I assume we're going to do.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And I know Seth that, you know, I'm getting a lot of calls about the money we've spent on recreation, but we've neglected and it just failed the time we do it. And it's just that time, I mean, that forty years is all of it.
I agree, I agree.
Gentlemen, I would suggest we go ahead and consider item seven, we've done everything else before we go into closed session. And that would be, we've already approved the. The bids, we just have to approve contract for that work, it's attorney review. Did you review the contract with the general?
Yes, I prepared.
So you're happy with it? Mr. Ritter had moved contract, sued for the general contractor, has authorized me to let you know that he will sign it and destroy it when it gets authorized, he said. He will accept it as well. Do you have a willing motion to.
It's pretty easy. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract as, that has been prepared by our attorney and you know, contract to agree, the contract has written, and I'll make a motion that we approve the contract and give the county manager and Mr. Ritter and his county attorney authorization to move the deal.
Gentlemen, we have a second. Motion, second by Mr. Tate, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. That motion passes, thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you, Don.
Gentlemen, we need a motion to go into closed session for a final, pretty little loop. Motion by.
Second.
Mr. Haven, second by me, all in favor of closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimated? We'll be back out in nine minutes, is that fair?
We'll do our best.
You said, yeah. Good job, Seth. Come on, call that. I'm going with your blackjack.
Well, they did it right at nine minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the chairman entertain a motion to modify the existing agreement for purchase and sale of the property, so as to extend the inspection time provided for within, from expiration date of today through and including April 15, 2013, and the closing date as provided in that agreement is modified from January 14, 2013 to April 3, 2013. From, I'm sorry, from January 29, 2013 to April 3. Is that clear?
That is.
And authorize Chairman Corbin to sign that modification and direct me to deliver it to the seller this evening. And if signed, that would be the end of my duty, if not signed, I am to deliver a letter to terminate contract.
Can that be for your motion, and your second? Yes. So motion is to extend the period as recommended by the attorney, that if that is not accepted by the buyer, that we terminate the contract.
Deliver in writing notice for the.
Any discussion on motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. And I just want to say, hopefully, and these guys can throw in and say what they want to, we still very much are interested in proceeding with recreation in Macon County. This is in no way trying to drag our feet or put anything off. We are just trying to be, A, good stewards of the county's money, and B, to make sure this is the site. I think we have some relative assurance it is, but we want to make sure this is the site that's proper for what we want to use.
For the benefit of the press, both Mr. Horton and myself have spoken with seller and they have indicated that they would be agreeable and sign.
And that would be.
Essentially have a contingency if.
That would be signed within the hour, that would be done this evening.
Well, it'd be this evening.
Well, yeah.
Since the whole start of this was to develop, make those economic development county as it pertains to travel and all, you all knew that you were going to have to invest a lot of money to make that happen, to get the money back. So is that still on the table or are you just talking about this as recreation to make fun?
No, no, we're not changing anything. All we've done is.
Because you can't get that millions in that they projected until you invest in this property.
That is correct. Our vision is still the same, there's a two-fold vision here, a two-fold vision. A is, is we need more recreation space for the people living here and the kids living here. And B is a, is the economic development issue or an asset to the county benefit to be able to run these ball fields here rather than go with lakes. So that still is the plan, we're just, we're just making sure, we're making sure it's right.
During the purchase, I've got a lot of questions about what you plan to do with the current bills. Do you have any thoughts about it all?
They will remain to you.
I mean, you remain.
They're wide open.
How late, I mean, you don't plan to secure that property, you plan to keep it and continue to utilize that as well.
If you.
You can imagine, you can say that property's out for real.
And let me tell you this, for those that would live here in the next time.
Which you don't have.
Current recreation park, we've lived here a long, we're just talking about, the current recreation park is, where the ball field's at is more of a flood length than what we're looking at. I mean, when it floods, those fields are under five and six feet of water consistently, regularly, that happens, so it, that, nothing's changed.
We still need all the field, we just need more.
We, if you remember, the very first presentation we had on this back in October, November, we have the highest number of baseball softball players being in Western County via survey that we have 1,100 people play baseball and softball here and a very small number of people. So you have ball games and ball, everything going on until 10, 11 o'clock at night, every night during the week, and we serve to continue to use the field to play. I think it's fair.
I want to say this right.
No, I said, is that right?
I want to say this right here, at one time, I was a real estate investor and I could almost go in for this county and look at these property and know I was never certain. It didn't take me long to figure out how much that property's worth and much it cost me to do what I wanted to do, what it could add. Today, I'm almost like a blind man with a penny that I'm not knowing. I don't like things, I'm scary about this stuff. But I had been looking and watching, and I had some things that I brought up, they were nervous. And I made a statement and I still feel like that property. And my opinion for some things is overpriced, that's my opinion, I didn't have faith, that's why I was asking. Having ball fields, having as far as bringing economic development into this county, I'm all for it. And I think I speak for it, that's what I'm saying. But I, as I said, I didn't know times, I didn't know the voting in this county, I stole and made own talk with.
Any other comments? Seth? Mr.? I think we had questions to feed at the end.
As the economic development people did a survey of what competition there would be to get the maximum impact of the economic picture.
What we had them do was talk to the people who bring these tournaments. We're not talking about our local rec, now, we're talking, bringing in tournaments.
Right.
They talked to tournament directors from the ISA, which is a big international softball association, and the big one is USSA, United States Basketball Association, and there's nothing but ASA. But they all indicated that they would use our facility for their tournaments, that they would love to do it, they could actually use our facility, there's one in Cherokee that's a four-field facility, there's one in Clayton that I believe is a four-field, and they could use all three of those, with us being the central location, to have what's called super tournaments, where you have 16, 18 teams emptying. So, yeah, that was part of the earlier discussion.
And was that a two-field or a four-field?
Four-field.
So, but we're authorizing two fields.
Well.
We're authorizing that, yeah.
For the part of grant, what we're doing is drawing up a plan that gets us to 500,000, that's the moment you can get. My opinion is we're going to have, if you build two, that makes sense to put lots up and do two, you'd want to do four, but that's another discussion for another day. But I, I agree with what you was saying, it could be a four-field.
They don't show them what these folks spend, you know, just the local people in Franklin. A number of them, call me, of what they spend on weekly. It's amazing, and I just.
So we'd like to have that economic.
Why we.
We're not looking at just building eight ball fields, we're looking if everything goes according to the master plan, of spending five million dollars.
No, no. There's a million of that will come apart, we're almost certain.
Where that work comes from? It's a five-million-dollar project, let me rephrase that.
Estimating.
When we work off number, we don't work all air. I think this document should be available for the public to, that's what, this is what we're looking through to make a decision to encumber Macon County for four or five million dollars. I think you guys certainly, the press should have this per use, you know. Since we, since we vote, it's part of the record, so it's available to anybody. How do they access? We can, we can put this online. We can, we can email it too. It's available.
You're welcome.
It's already on my blog.
And you've got, commissioners, you can send that, all of you got this in form of an email, you can email this to anybody you want to, it's popular and send it, and we'll email that to the media, so you guys. Just plug your computer out with an envelope. I just, I just printed it. Gentlemen, any other business coming forth, board?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there an agenda for, is this just a.
We've got, with the chairman, I go sit down.
We'll make, we'll make an agenda, then we can.
You all want to put on their, let's, just get the calendar from me, you know, we've got basically blocked out by, and I think find out as soon as we have lunch there, you want to run eat lunch or work through lunch.
I understand we. Yeah.
You'll stay pretty busy.
I talked to Jack, I can put together an agenda, we certainly want to talk about the budget, we will probably talk about things like this project, we'll talk about sort of some big picture things to do with budget, long-term planning and things like that.
Evaluation, future updates.
After tomorrow?
That's tomorrow, I'm coming right here.
And then you'll tell the board about it on Thursday?
Yeah, we have, me and Mr. Corbin will have it reported for us tomorrow.
Will you guys meet tomorrow?
We'll meet Shelby's Packer.
We're, that's our scoop, we're liaison right now.
And also ADC makes the floor now, but I haven't been revisiting it there. That's out West, Packer.
The gentleman, if there's anything else that you guys want to put, we can talk about anything without, you know, agenda, we can talk about. If you want something written down that we know we're going to talk about, I'd like to sort of have an agenda to follow and have some order to what we do, let me know and I'll.
They'll be here tomorrow.
You go that there for? Okay, motion recessed?
Motion recessed until Saturday.
We have a motion second, recessed on Saturday, all in. We have a motion second, resets on Saturday, all in favor say aye. Vote that motion today.
That means that I can immediately have a short.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. It sends.